Ah hello good day welcome to another sketching with me Charlie Sketching this was from the other day I like how these look they're nice and sketch How's it going I hope it's going well Oh there's another sketch I did for TikTok I don't know if you will see it just because of the way I have my tripod angled Turned out pretty cool I like it But today I'm gonna do Um anyway Thirty second to like a minute sketches Just to get some like just repetition and I'm trying to see Where the camera ends cuz I didn't really pay attention too much so I'm still setting up a little bit right here Forgive me I'm sorry if I am a little quiet as well I don't think I am my mic should be out pick everything up I think Cool So This is the game plan actually hold on Raise myself real fast so I'm not hopefully my head's not In the way I don't want my head to really Be in the way right here um so what I'm gonna so the what I what the plan is Is Uh let me draw This figure real quick right here I don't know if you heard that car just now That's funny and then she's like on a stool Alright so and then her hand around the counter of the table This right here man it's so so far away Um I really have a hard time zooming in and out though with while staying in focus Ah dang okay So I did this fairly I think quick I would say Um but it still has some accuracy and I have some accuracy to it But that's the main objective minimal lines and just trying to get the gesture and trying to get the big shapes trying to figure out Where the whole like I don't know where the whole figures going this is just meant for me to go fast it's more of like a gesture drawing I think That's what you would Um categorize it under Uh yeah um Let's go I'm like I said thirty to forty or thirty to thirty seconds to a minute depending on how much detail I wanna put into it but I kinda wanna go fast Um I definitely wanna make them smaller except That I can't really zoom in on my camera or I can but it's It's a real pain to go in back and forth back and forth so I don't know how big I'm gonna keep him I might just keep him at this size right here and then if I fill up This page I might move on to another page if I go on really quickly cuz I do wanna move pretty fast We'll see though We'll see how fast I actually move with these She's holding I think her Um I guess her skirt dress not too sure Um that looks really weird Just shade all that in There's I don't like the way that looked at all Um this is like she's holding on to this skirt right here Cool Okay this one's a little bit more tricky it's a I think I might have drawn this one already not too sure But then again I do repeat my poses a lot or the pose that I draw a lot just cuz I need to keep The memory down of drawing these You know You know Jimbo Do I see the other leg not really it's over here in the background so I'm just gonna ignore it and that's that post Okay so Don't think too much just kinda go with the flow Cuz when I start thinking is when I slow down and I start making And lines that are not perfect but also lines that don't really matter to be perfect This model has her head tilted quite a bit in a lot of her photos she gives a lot of attitude in her photos It's pretty cool I like it I like this model a lot Uh Yana Sinner I believe some some something along those lines She's an SG model as well as a Um well I mean I think first and foremost SG model but then also A um Instagram model I guess you could say Um Shoot there we go trying to show lines of clothing Hmm okay so this one She's laying down and I can already tell you my proportions are gonna be off But that's the name of the game yeah Her back is arch but I didn't make like I said I didn't make the portions correct It's kinda bleeding into or Forming into this other one Give me a little bit of hair and I mean it end right there but Eh whatever I messed up It's interesting to follow my sketchbook over cuz usually on my iPad I can just move the page over but here I can't really Move the book itself just cuz then I have to readdress the camera and I'm not trying to really Mess with the camera at all and since I can't really mess with the camera I can't mess with the sketchbook And that leaves me to move my whole body over just to adjust to draw these poses Oh goodness Um okay so Those are some ugly lines but it is what it is I'm just trying to draw some clothes lines right there Okay so Cool Moving over here to this one Draw it rather small Okay you can still see it just wanted to make sure you could still see what I was drawing Yeah what an ugly line But it is what it is Like I said I can't really move my sketchpad at all Lot of attitude with these poses Not really drawing the face in which I I guess it could be cuz then that'd give that show that attitude that I'm talking about But it's alright I just wanna get some gestures in not really too worried about The Facial expressions There you go man I think I watched this one bad It's alright I think I might be able to save it we'll see It's only because I haven't drawn the arm in I started drawing the hands which I have A habit of doing before I actually get the arm or Before I actually get the arms in So These angles That's fine I guess And she's leaning on a Table Just wanna address that stomach a little bit Was the hip area there we go Happy with those lines really shouldn't spend that much time On this but it's alright Oh alright we're moving on to a different pose or different person Hmm that's one five Oh forgive me you probably hear that vehicle going man okay so Uh this is terrible I did not really Draw this accordingly My bad It's fine This makes four an interesting Um little overlap The hands oh dang you really yeah you really can't see anything of this uh this person is on a swing Um the foot's like forward right Kind of in our in our faces And then this leg is just kinda down the swings right here And he goes keeps going this way but you can't really see it Right so again same person on the swing but this time I'm gonna give myself a little bit more room Oh did you see how I started Um Doing soft lines and I was kinda just Wiggling my fingers or my hand around instead of doing a definitive stroke Uh I was trying to I was getting a little unsure with myself Uh let me draw this real quick and I'll show what I'm talking about Alright so Swing I started um so on like this pose I started See I started doing like mo- multiple strokes I stopped myself really quickly right here I don't even where I started it but I stopped myself really quickly And um I was I'm just trying to avoid this all altogether today instead of going like All these soft strokes and getting the little details in making nice and scratching and just kinda wanna do Uh really quick uh I guess it started strokes right So this person has a big baggy shirt on and it crinkles off a lot right here crinkle wrinkle Bunches up I don't know and then bunches up right there around the hips and the butt And it falls straight right here And I really wanna show that cuz I'm trying to practice on my folds as well And there we go you have the head up here With the hair you really don't see much Um nice little pose right here this one's gonna be Really quiet just cuz Uh I'm really Comfortable with this pose or I know how to draw it cuz I've drawn it quite a few times in my day I will say it kinda accentuated it a little bit Apologies Um okay There we go oh look at that that one's cool Um okay so it's a cool pose but I don't know where to start So you don't really see much of that leg and on this leg kinda Okay what is this oh that's this oh geez okay so Definitely should not started with that line but it's alright Um and then the hand is right here on top of the chest With arm coming through that way and then The chest coming right here and the arm as well Uh she's holding on to her hair Uh you can't really see the head cuz I did this again But that's how this shirt would be As well as The pants Where do I start with this I guess start with the arm And then the hand The leg she's really shooting this foot up high Um okay and this comes down to There like so this leg is bent Right here Bring the arm This way like so The head is over here There's the shoulder The chest The shirt You don't really see this arm I mean it's right here with the hand And like so Draw Clothes This is nice it's just a really beautiful curve And then shoulder blades The back Uh shoulder blade is right there you don't see that arm This arm is gonna go up But it's for short end and it's come it's gonna come back this way the hands above the head right here Just like so Like that You have the foot right here and I believe the other foot is right here This person is on the bed though so you can't really tell Where the foot or anything ends Cool And just like that you got another body Bam easy money Easy money This is a very interesting pose cuz this knee right here Is coming kinda like directly at us but then the leg goes back down And so there's like a big squish factor going on right there as well With this right here like the tight kinda sink and to where the leg is squished again And you can really see like how everything comes in together right there And then the foot is right here This is fun cuz I can't like I said I can't move the sketchbook but I can still move my hand around and my body And so it's just like kinda jerking everywhere Hands chilling right there you don't really see the forearm cuz behind the leg itself But you see where Yeah where that arm is at Okay And the way she's leaning you don't see The other arm So that's like that and that's like that Cool oh what a tricky pose especially to be all the way over here Hmm how do I go about this okay so Chest area right there you got the hand resting on the belly And the arm goes up here Uh neck Head Hmm What's a tricky pose I'm definitely not happy with how it's looking I'm getting the gist of it which I guess I need to be happy about But it's definitely hmm Me it could be better Okay so she's relaxing Legs open like so Hmm this leg is up but it the feet still match right here Ew Oh oh god what I do Alright so Shirt Shirt you can't see that cuz the forearm is underneath that or The upper arm is underneath the forearm this legs up like this this one's to the side Cool and then I guess the shirt where the shorts meet Uh this one's fairly easy Face Um like so Where the hands roll Like that and this is gonna go straight down This shoulder goes right here It sinks into the covers cuz she's laying down so I saw The forearm goes that far and Okay And then there's a bit of a curl you can see Some of the buns in the back with the foot Like little squirrels Alright cool and then this shoulder obviously cool and the shirt Can't forget about the shirt or the shorts Cool hmm here we go this one has a cross arm Hmm okay Right here all the foot kinda extend a little bit farther this way And There we go She's leaning like on A table or not a table She's leaning on a surface Um that's somewhat same pose let's avoid that pose just cuz it looked the same this one is stretching Her legs Stretching oh she's only stretching one leg actually cuz this one's bent I gave her heels Okay her hand is right here Goes up her arm is relaxing on her leg I guess putting pressure On side leg Back is pretty flat nothing too crazy about that Oh yeah It is what it is Uh the face you can hardly see it's like so Cool Another stretch hmm okay so this one's interesting though I don't know how to go about this one Once again you can't really see the face There's a shirt 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 Cool Cool yeah this one's not too bad I think we already had a pose like this earlier but it's fine Repetition is key consistency is key to improving Your skills in anything you do Oh wait no that this goes out that stays in I just realized I don't know if my pencil is really picking up cuz I was kinda going soft with it And this is supposed to be more of an ASMR video Kind of failing at that aren't I There you go ASMR Uh not screw that pose um She just fell in this pose and it's interesting cuz I haven't drawn one like this and I guess those will be the last of it I don't know Dang I finally erased But it's just cuz this one Need to start more this way And then so Oh yeah Now that I got my lead out definitely Sounds more appealing At least to me What is this arm doing I was like It's contorted I really don't know what that arm is doing so weird Oh it's down okay it's going down this way and then goes back this way like that and the hands right here It's like they caught her falling mid pose And then the face Is right there so then the shirt should be right there you can't really see the Shirt line Cool Fun quick stuff At least it was quick for me cuz I did quite a bit huh Man oh dang guys you can't really see the bottom ones I'm so sorry oh dang guys you can't really see the bottom ones I'm so sorry here look there you go get a better view of the bottom ones what a bummer I should have remembered that I couldn't draw that well I hope you enjoyed I don't know if you have any questions I'll make another one again soon I'm not really sure about my schedule but this is fun I enjoy sketching the sketchpad oh duh what is today again uh it's twenty twenty two of October I think it's the twenty six twenty seventh twenty eighth what is today uh the twenty seventh cool it's fun drawing with y'all I hope you enjoyed have a good day